It's six fifty-nine.
It's seven oh one.
I'm seven oh one. You're seven oh one.
It's that's a seven oh three. I mean, seriously guys, can we calibrate our clock? Being seven o'clock, I'm gonna open the planning board meeting for October second, two thousand and nineteen. We have a couple of bills.
Because the meeting, the planning board is not meeting.
We'll just do those. We'll just sign them. So, we have first of all, we wanna thank Gene Vincent for bringing all this candy. It keeps us with all this energy to stay up late for our late meetings.
They're fun size.
So you can have two or three and have the same amount of calories. Again, fun is bored to be on in the whole town. We have open forum, does anybody have any comments, questions?
Do you have any bills or anything?
Do bills and open forum?
Technically, yeah, seven minutes.
We're gonna talk about we have a few little minutes, do you wanna do, talk about the, um, the battery backup? I know that, that that new ca- that email came in.
Yes. The Finney's Inc., no, not Inc., Solar. Zero Point Solar is requesting, trying to get permits for battery backup at, um, these solar facilities and probably more.
Battery backup or battery storage? Storage?
Battery
Storage.
Battery storage for the existing panels on site, you know, not for anything other than what they're producing on site. So, the questions come up. Kurt Masterson, zoning official, believes it's an accessory use to the current solar facilities. But, um, based on our new bylaws, it sounds like it's a special permit process to get battery backup approved for any sites.
I thought that's what we agreed upon last time, uh, when we came up last time.
Right, so I wasn't here then and it seems, but it appears to me, reading the language and the new so- zoning, uh, solar bylaws and that this is meant to be done as a special permit process for the battery storage. So, we just want to guide the applicant on what they need to do as far as getting approved because they are under the assumption they just need to get permits and they're gonna be on their way.
Special permit.
Yeah, special, but I mean, building permits. So, but, I think the intent of the bylaw was to have them coming forward to get the battery and storage approved.
Uh, so they're not grandfathered because of any subdivision plan?
No. It's a new, it's a new thing, so they, they, they may have got a subdivision for their original project, but now what, now it's a whole new.
Yeah, none of these were applied for, like, during, what, before the solar moratorium, they're all brand new.
Yeah, there were nothing on any.
And there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of specific requirements to look at, and we, I think we've, we've, we went through all of that, the presentation and everything, so we wanna make sure.
I mean, they've, they've done their homework as far as meeting the guidelines and everything, but it's still, they're gonna have to come here and go to the board, get the input from the fire department and everything, and, um, show it they're meeting the current bylaws. So, I, I just wanna get consensus of the board because I thought that was the intent of the bylaw.
Nope, yes, perfect. Um, while we're in, um, while we have a couple extra minutes, the town hall was, the town meeting was rescheduled on the sixteenth, which is, I think, um, a, a meeting night that we are meeting on.
Yes, the sixteenth is our next regularly scheduled meeting.
We need to figure out as a board when we, what we would like to do about that if we want to, um, bump it up another one, like, what makes sense? What does everybody think? And why can't everybody make it and?
Well, how heavy is the agenda for that?
At the moment, it's, it's doable on, um, November sixth.
I, I put it on down, you have this to.
And I think the one thing that would have been a hangup, but I think that they're gonna need their own time to get ready for it is these solar companies with the battery. They're gonna have to prepare the plans and everything, submit the application, so I don't think they're gonna be ready to, like, within two or three weeks. It might take them till November to get ready to approve their application.
Do you think that we should skip that meeting and just kinda double up on November six?
Either that or choose to, if it's possible, choose to have it, say, on November, I'm in, I'm sorry, October seventeenth or October ninth.
If we do it on the twenty-third, that still leaves two weeks before then.
Exactly.
It depends on how busy our agenda is and is there anything that's pressing to get cleared up before November?
I don't think there is.
There was something that was pressing it out, I don't remember what it was, but we're gonna get it settled as soon as possible.
Do we, we don't have any deadlines or anything that, that are coming up that we would need?
No, um, the only one that was really issued was two ninety-nine Sturridge Road and they've actually asked to be continued except for it was till October sixteenth, which that's the one.
But we can bump.
So, if that pushed off to November second?
Is that gonna be a big deal?
November sixth. November sixth.
So, it's not gonna be a big deal? So, do we wanna play it by ear and then if something, if, if something does come up and we need to meet or whether it's, um, whether we need to meet? So, we have a, tomorrow night, we have a meeting, executive session.
For VGG?
For VGG, so.
So, I don't know about it, right?
So, we have executive session and then we have a joint session, so if something, if something comes up, we.
I'm just thinking, if we plan a meeting for the twenty-third, I hate stacking the agendas because to be here till eleven o'clock is unfair to the applicants, it's unfair to us. And I think that way, because by ten o'clock at night, you're tired, you wanna get out of here, not you personally, but I mean, I, I'll speak, me. I'm tired, I wanna get out. And to have an applicant who's been sitting here since seven to have a planning board member at ten o'clock trying to make a sound decision, I just think it's only fair to have another meeting as opposed to, because you just, I don't know what's gonna come in in the interim.
I, I will say, you know, if, and it probably still wouldn't end up being a long meeting, we have two that I know they're, that the two ninety-nine Sturridge Road, they submitted their revised plans, it's just matter they did it yesterday, so Mike Andre hadn't had the chance to respond. The first one, if you look at the draft for the November sixth meeting, um, Conica Hill subdivision, let's see, it's a mess in there, but they're stringing it out, but the one thing is, the builder's actually taking over trying to get this done trying to get foundations in for houses before it gets too cold, so if we were to push it up, it would probably be a big help to him. He's aware, you know, I explained to him the whole issue with the town meeting today and he understands, but honestly, he would be very happy if we could accommodate that application earlier.
And that's what I'm saying, is that we don't know what's going to come in in the interim. We might end up with an agenda that goes till midnight because things just keep coming, I would.
So, do you wanna book, you wanna schedule a meeting for the twenty-third?
Yes.
Uh, we wanna post the Wednesday before.
Yes. And make sure we announce as soon as possible that we're jumping to the sixteen.
I have had a couple of comments about, I know we're not the only board that posts forty-eight hours, but let's just set up, set up a standard and we will, as
As soon as we know, yes.
We'll post the Wednesday before and then we'll modify the forty-eight hours, the Monday if necessary.
Yes.
Because we usually know what's going on.
Absolutely.
And then if we have to do a tweak, just, again, I had a couple of residents make a co- a couple of comments and I, I just wanna, um, you know, we're there, we're prepared for them, so let's post the Wednesday, if we can, the Wednesday before. But let's schedule a meeting for the twenty-third and if it doesn't fill up, if you can throw a couple of things on November sixth and you know we don't need that meeting, everybody will be happy and we'll have some free time, if not, then.
Well, that's why I think that not everybody's gonna be ready for the twenty-third anyways, but some of them will be ready.
Right, so even if we come in for an hour, get them out of the way.
Right, it's just gonna help them and.
It'll save us an hour.
Let's have, let's have a vote to schedule a meeting and then if we have to cancel, we have to cancel, but at least we have a vote to schedule it.
Right.
And then we'll.
I'll make a motion that we schedule our neck, we bump our meeting from October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen to October twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me, we'll be on the point third. Alright, so. Seven eleven, um, we have we have the, the table side?
What's that? Do you open phone, anybody?
Unless he's playing Cast for Halloween, he's not up there. Is he aware that he's to be here tonight?
I spoke to him this afternoon, explained, you know, that we were talking about it, so we, I don't think he feels that there's any issue.
So well, we can continue, he doesn't need to be here.
Right.
So, let's, do we have, we have Graves' report in front of us?
Yeah, so we met on, uh, I'm sorry, I don't remember, last Monday anyways, but, uh, at the site and everything, walked the site. Jerry Foskett's the highway supervisor, myself, Mike Andre, and we walked the subdivision from end to end, you know, pointing out all the defects up there and all the items that still have to be addressed, which there are numerous items. And Mr. Reardon said he's gonna take care of all that and his, I think some of the things we pointed out to him, this lighting and trees that have to be done and everything, and he sounded like, yeah, I know, but, you know, surprise voice, let's put it that way.
But, so, I drove up there, I thought it was
Oh, do that.
A mess, yes. A mess.
Yes, well.
And, and where are the, where are the light poles?
Well.
Not there.
Yeah, there, there's no bases, there's no nothing, so I don't even know.
Does it even like nubs or anything? Like, are, are there wires under the ground or?
I don't, honestly, I don't believe there's anything.
So, so you're gonna have.
He said he's taking into account for him, I don't know where, but there's nothing there.
So, he's gonna undo, undo what he did and then, like, so.
Yes, that's what he's gonna have to do.
So, I think, like, the last meeting, the last meeting we had, not, I know I missed one meeting and it was also discussed, we kinda drew that line.
We did.
Like, not understand, like, in the cement with say, with, with paint, right, and said, we just need to be done. Like, we can't have him come in every few months saying, you know, um, it's gonna be done, it's gonna be done, and now we're gonna get to another season.
Right.
So, um, what, the, I'm coming in here going, this, we have a new bond estimate, because I specifically called and I said, have Mike do a new bond estimate. I wanna, my opinion is, we pull the bond, we take care of it, it's done, and the residents don't have to worry about the subdivisions ever not getting done. It's done and it's over and we don't have to do it anymore. It's, we have a lot of meetings, we can't waste our time. I think, I think we, was it, is it six or seven times or more?
It's gonna be more than that.
That, that we've been kind of saying, okay, okay. Our job isn't to hold anybody's hand, we, we've given, we've been as kind as, and, and, and probably more kind than we should've. That's what's in my minds, um, what, what does everybody else think?
So, I mean, I see with the bond that we have, I'm not sure that's enough to finish it, because I see here fifty-four hundred dollars for streetlights.
I, I confirmed that with Mike Andre, who said, has he brought that subject stuff up, whether that money would finish the work that needs to be done there, and he said yes.
Really?
And I, I questioned myself.
Is the lights even, is the run for the lighters? So, there's only three, there's only three streetlights going?
I think they're underground, I think they're covered up by dirt, I thought they were.
There's no bases for the lights.
No standards.
He admitted that, and he says that there's been concrete overrun, I don't see it, you know.
It looks like.
Because usually, even if you have it underground, you bring it up to a point in the market, so you know where to find it.
That's correct, yeah, you flag it and everything, correct.
Yeah, exactly, and there's nothing.
It's like a whole bunch of dirt was just spread on everything and.
That's basically what happened.
So, not okay.
Nope. The last time he was here, we said, these are the contingencies, don't come back until they're fulfilled. And by the sounds of it, he's back and they're not fulfilled.
Well, not bad.
Well, he's not back.
So, what, I mean.
I think he kinda said that last time, last time he came here, is that if I didn't get it done.
Hold on.
I, I believe that's what he said, but I don't want us to be very.
Whatever the processes, we, we, I, we, we need a vote to, to pull that bond and to, to get it in the motion and then it's out of our hands. It kinda goes into, um, is it Kurt's hand, I mean, how, I don't know.
Not with Mike handling, he puts it out for estimates from other contractors.
The contractors, okay.
I wouldn't be surprised, just given the situation that Mr. Reardon might challenge it though.
Oh, I have no doubt.
Yeah, so, be ready to deal with that.
Do we want to have Randy reach out to him and say, listen, this is what we talked about, do you have X, Y, Z days to get this done or?
We already gave him X, Y, Z days and, and in actionable ways.
He's working on, but like, the problem is, um, they put in all the cash basins and they put them all wrong. So, now they're currently taking them all out and doing it again, you know, it's just constant.
Alright, yeah, it's done.
So, do we have a motion to pull this, to pull this bond and have it go through the standard process of getting the work done and getting it hopefully done before the season ends?
Well, it won't get done before the season ends.
The one thing is the top coat of the road probably won't get done because there's so much, every, the end, numerous dri- driveways have to now be fixed because they're picked, the water's coming down the road, it'll pick down the driveway.
Oh, yeah, we said pickings too, right, yeah.
So, numerous driveways have to be cut out and repaired. The, the curbing at the end of almost every driveway is wrong, so they have to be cut out and repaired. There's many things that have to be done that the likelihood of getting it done is false.
It's just not fair to the, it's just not fair to the residents up there.
The other concern is, there's, there's probably other things he hasn't done for the residents and that's not on this list. And my guess is that once we pull the bond, he's gonna stop.
Well, we, oh, I think we just, we just need to do this and then if the residents need to do a personal lawsuit against him, then that's on them. But I think that at least we owe.
Can we have some residents here?
Yes.
Are we going down the right?
It's a, so it's a public hearing, let's, let's continue the public hearing.
So, question I had about the road, if it's not being finished this season, he's already raised everything. So, how are they gonna plow the roads, are they gonna have to drop everything back down or, I mean, that's, that's gonna be a big issue, the plows hitting the manhole covers and.
Agreed. We've had that last year happen.
Yeah, Mr. Reardon said he was gonna get it paved this year. It's possible, but I know he has a lot of work to do before he gets there. So, um, basically you can pave up till December first.
I agree, can, yeah.
It depends on the weather, as soon as it starts getting really cold, the plants will start making asphalt. So, that's what really gears whether he's gonna pave that road or not.
My question is, if you do pull the bond and you're gonna put bids out, it's obviously not gonna have enough time to get it done this year.
Correct.
Those are already raised structures, so now that's another issue that's gonna be for us, a problem.
What are the options?
The other option is for us to wait again and meet again on the, on Nov- you know, October twenty-third, but do we really, do I mean, we, we wanna, we're, we're here to, we're here to rec, you know, kind of, to remedy the situation that we have, um, so in front of us is the idea of, do we wanna pull it and just, at least we know it'll get done? Or do we wanna?
One thing to consider, given the time of year and everything, is that Mr. Reardon wanted to get that road paved because, you know, he's gotta, he major part of the bond is the road, that's why he's focusing on.
But he can't pave it the way everything else is.
That's why he's up there, they're current, I mean, it's a mess, but they're currently redoing all the cash basins and everything.
Are they working?
Is it, is it even? I mean, you, you were up there with Mike.
Yes.
Is it even possible for him to throw a code, to cover it, to fit, to do those roads with the, with, with all the raisings, with all, with, with, uh, with it all raised up and everything? Is it even possible if we said, alright, you have until October thirty-first, if it's not done on October thirty-first, we're pulling everything? Is that even possible or do we just get it over with tonight and just pull that bond and start the process?
Jerry Foskett said if, it might be possible, but it really depends on how quickly he got started and gets the work done because he has to, he has to do the repairs in the road and then he has to repair the ends of all the driveways.
And looking at the history of what we've seen? What do you, what do you feel?
If it's not done by November sixth, it's probably not gonna get done. So, we have another meeting on November sixth, do you wanna push it off until then, just give him the opportunity?
I think we, we vote to pull the bond on November sixth. And if it's, in, on that date, and then it's over. So, uh, comment from the public?
Yeah.
Which one, which one to do the best for you? We're not.
Well, I.
I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, will you identify yourselves in between the other parties?
Right, sorry, Ross, you're from High Road. Um, well, i- if the bond is pulled now, um, and the only concern at that point is that we have the raised structures and it's gonna be brought with the plows. I mean, if you go through any city where they're in the middle of repairing a road, you'll see little, put little berms up over to, to create a.
Is that something that could be considered? Again, Don Nichols High Road, you know, could berms be? If you pull the bond today, right, if you pull the bond today, is it something that, um, you know, that goes into bond process? Understand that, not sure what it is, but then could we look at, we'll all learn as we go through that. But could there be a commitment of, you know, almost like ramps?
Well, that's committing town fund, we have to go to the board to select them for that, because that's not really the bond.
That's Jerry, that's Jerry Foskett, that's, that's our highway superintendent. But he's gonna have to plow it anyways and.
Does, does the town plow it or?
The town does not plow it right.
No, I don't think so.
We get a single path from him.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, technically, you have a neighbor down the hill that does the rest of it.
Because you guys had made that list yet.
Correct.
It might be in the best interest to give, he's currently working on, and then if he stopped working and by the time the town actually gets somebody else in to do the repairs, we're probably talking winter, now it's gonna be left undone.
Exactly.
If we, he's focusing on trying to get that road paved, maybe we give him the opportunity, and then if he hasn't finished the other work, if the road was paved and then we pulled the bond to get the rest of the work done?
Yes.
Then at least the road's done.
Exactly. Because my concern is that that is still a private roadway, so Tim is the only one plowing it. So, if we pull the bond and he decides to stop entirely and he walks, well, then now we have a whole bunch of residents who better buy really nice snow blowers or, because they're not gonna have the town plowing the roadwoods. And we wanna do what's right for everybody and I just don't think that would be fair.
The road should be the last thing that gets.
Right.
That's the road, that's, you have to fix everything and then pave the road.
The other work is outside of the road, is the road curving on the driveway.
I see seventeen manholes that need to be adjusted.
That's in the middle of the road. Because they paved over them.
Yeah, and then some of them are raised with concrete brick too.
Yeah, that he's repairing that now.
So, they'll have to come out and be redone.
That's what they're currently working on.
So, so what, what's the worst thing that can happen? He doesn't have paths. Excuse my terminology, and now there's only this much left of the bond because, you know, like, so, so now it's gonna cost even more to fix it if it's done wrong because things are being done wrong. You, you see the mistakes, there's things done backwards.
Well, if it's done wrong, he doesn't get the bond back.
But there, but there won't be enough in the bond to even fix what's, because we'll have to undo what's done and that'll add a bunch of cost to it, that's the problem.
The board, he's, he's requesting a bond reduction, the board can say, no.
We already told him no, he did that once before.
But that's what, he's requesting, you know, it's like a sixty thousand dollar reduction.
Yes, he tried that before.
He didn't say no because we're not satisfied, I mean, we have major concerns that the town might be paying to get this done with your bond money.
How much more can it be, I mean, the construction people? How much more, how much damage could it cost? Could it, could it, could it cost fifty thousand dollars worth of damage if he does the road wrong?
Oh, easy.
We're pulling up. So, so if we say hurry up and do it by November sixth or pulling your bond and he hurries up and does it and he does it wrong? However, it can be wrong, and then, well, there won't be enough money to fix it.
Does the town wanna be responsible when he goes for a shitty, or, excuse me, a junky road? Then you're gonna have to come in, the town's gonna have to come in and hire someone to make all the repairs and in the end, the product is not gonna be good. The people living here aren't gonna really wanna a bad product at the end.
So, so, so what's the least risky thing to do here?
I would say, give him to, give him to October, for the end, end of the.
October thirty-first, November sixth.
Yeah, November sixth and November.
And don't invoke not give him the bond.
The bond is not gonna be reduced. No, no, absolutely not.
Just in the circumstances, so, and the numbers in that bond, I, I mean, Mike Andre said that it would cover the current cost, but Jerry Foskett knows that, you know, price of asphalt goes up and everything, so.
Because I'm, I'm nervous because things have already been done wrong, so they have to, like, things are in backwards and stuff, right? So, is there any way that, that's, Mike, can you, can somebody go up there and make sure that it's kind of, not, not that we need to pay for it?
It's the inspection process.
To kind of inspect the process a little more because what if now, and again, he doesn't fix things the way he's been fixing, he's, he does things the way he's been doing things and now he, he throws a coat over that and, and now.
You can't see.
And we can't, you know, and, and now we have to pull everything off and fix it again, and there is not enough money to fix that. That's what my biggest worry is, so if, and we're saying, let's give him another chance, um, at this point, I'm, we've given him chances for how many years now? Has it been a couple of years?
At least.
He might request that Mike Andre go serious, like, once a week, keeps it on pause.
At least.
That's gonna cost, that's gonna cost.
You know, to take a look at the work as it's being done, so if it doesn't get completed, then it has to be taken all apart again.
The road is the easiest thing, he calls someone and they come pave it, that's all.
Yeah, but it's all the other things that he did wrong.
Yeah, that's what he should be working on now, getting that.
We don't have the list of everything else, we don't have the Graves' report here, we just have the.
We had to redo it and didn't do it right last time.
It'd be nice if Mike went up and Mike would go up, it's like, alright, you got this.
Put a few things on the Graves' report.
And then Jerry Foskett's also been personally involved because the town basically takes over the road once everything's complete and Jerry doesn't wanna inherit a problem, so.
I mean, I mean, if he's, if he, if he's close by, if he's close.
Have you been up there, have you seen it?
But if he's close by November sixth, that gives him the whole month of, of November to pay it. And if it's a nice, they pave right till, they pave all the time now, but they pave right till.
Against two.
I agree with him.
So.
Can I, I'm sorry, so Dom Chantilly, twenty-five High Road. My concern is, I'm one of the drivers he has to rip up to fix the, the mess up, and I don't, I have no faith in what he is able to do or his subcontractors. So, that's my issue. They're gonna be working on it, but they're gonna do a shit job, kind of, to your point.
Similarly.
And, and we worked really hard on what we're trying, what he left us with and I just don't wanna have to deal with more headaches than we already are, so, I don't know.
So, I mean, when he does that job, he's gonna have to do, do it to the, the satisfaction of the, the town engineer. So, if he doesn't do it right, he doesn't get his money back for it, so that money still stays in the bond, so it will get fixed correctly. Whether he does it or we have to do it next, it's already.
Yep.
And again, let me clarify, so my issue is, he's gonna do work and we'll also have this bond, we'll have three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, right? And now he does more stuff wrong because things are getting done wrong and again.
That's why Mike's gonna, Mike Andre is gonna do weekly inspections.
So, we want, we want weekly inspections and.
At least weekly, yes.
He doesn't get his bond back if he doesn't do it right. If it turns around, it's not right, he doesn't get that.
But a bond doesn't mean anything if it's a hundred thousand dollars more than this and it's not a hundred thousand dollars to fix it, that's the problem.
The one issue we're going to have is Mr. Reardon is not going to pay for Mike to come.
He's gonna, he's gonna have to. So, that's the, that's a stipulation, stipulation of the bond.
The other option is that we pull the bond.
Stipulation of the bond. He either pays Mike or he doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't, or he pulls the bond.
It's a, it's a cause and effect.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, I know that's gonna be his.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, some hard work and.
So, he's gonna, so.
He brought this on himself. The first time, we wouldn't have to do it.
No, I agree.
We can do, we could do a letter and say, you didn't show up. And here's the deal. If, if, if we, we're gonna vote to either pull your bond or you're gonna agree that you're gonna pay for Mike to go up there for weekly inspections and then on November sixth, you'll come into our board and if it's, and if it's done, we won't pull your bond, and if it's not done, we will pull your bond.
I think that's excellent.
And destroy, can we, does that sound reasonable and you'll, you'll send out a, a nice letter?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for that.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, so you wanna report from Mike Andre for the November sixth meeting?
Weekly. Yes.
Basically, the status.
Yes, absolutely.
And for Mike to visit, um, at least weekly, yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, we wanna see those electrical, we wanna see, before something gets planted on top of them, we wanna see those little nubs, those electrical poles? The, the lights and all that, supposed to be there.
And also you need to make a motion to not, uh, reduce the bond amount?
Oh, I will make a motion not to reduce the bond amount, I believe it as is.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excuse me, I just have something to say as well. Megan Bergum, eleven Downey, um, we need to consider the safety of our kids in the neighborhood as well. Um, it's really unfortunate that I told my kids they can't go ride their bikes down the street because of all the safety concerns and the longer we push this off, the longer the kids who we moved in this neighborhood for this reason are not able to enjoy it, so, that's.
Well, I, I have to say, the likelihood, when, if board decides to pull the bond, there's probably gonna be a lawsuit and everything's gonna come to a standstill for as long as that lawsuit goes on.
I have no doubt.
So, I understand that, that's why we're trying to, how can we get him, get some of this done so we don't have to go that route?
Eventually, eventually it'll get done, but do you wanna, which one to, which one to? Okay, I, I under, like, I understand how you're, but on our side, if, if we push too hard, then it, everything gets like, in a lawsuit and you may not have it done for three, you know what I'm saying?
No, we understand that.
And if it's helpful, you know, we feel you're mediating well, and I think you need to hear that as a board as well. You've heard our concerns, you've given us voice and a forum for this voice when our conversations directly with our builder have broken down. So, thank you and we appreciate that and we know you're looking for the best interest of all, um, as much as we just want it done. You know, for some of us, you know, we all do, right? I mean, you know, husband and I, we've been there for four years and no matter.
We want it done, Jerry.
It's an unfortunate situation. It's an unfortunate situation.
I've only been here since, you know, I spent more time in that subject than I've been anywhere in this town.
It's just, you know, and, you know, it's home, and we want it to be home, and we want it to feel like home, and we, as much as we enjoy being here, we'd like to not be here because it's been resolved.
Exactly. Right. Well, you want the home you were sold.
But we do have candy, so.
You want the home you were sold, you want the subdivision you were sold, you want the idea.
We have the house we were sold.
We have the house we were sold, just that.
But, I mean, you want the neighborhood the way it was sold to you, and that's, and we're trying to make everybody happy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, so thank you.
Thank you.
We always like when people like us. Um, we have, so, we've, we voted we're, we're done, and the letter will be out.
Yeah, they'll send the letter out.
Are we continuing or closing the public hearing?
We're gonna continue the public hearing.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing until November second?
Yes.
Six.
Six.
November, November sixth, they keep saying the second. November sixth?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You keep saying second.
I do, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
It wasn't, yeah.
I know, I know, I didn't write it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I am.
It's in the state.
It isn't, it isn't even a public hearing.
It's in the discussion.
We have Otis Land Management, um, for Sherry's Road.
Oh, I didn't pass it out.
A continued public hearing.
For, for Sherry, right?
What are you talking about?
Good, how are you?
Pass that around. So this is the Graves Engineering Report for, uh, for Sherry's Road.
Thank you.
Let me grab the, the plans, the plans have, I don't know.
Keep going down and pass it around.
We can't put them out to Pooch and.
We'll take it off your hands.
Always have good stuff.
Hey, Mr. Bur, yeah, you can go over the changes that have been addressed since the last time.
Yes. Okay, hi, I'm Kalisto Burton, um, since we were here last time, we did a couple of things, um, we, we actually, uh, did an updated survey of the property, or certain parts of the property, um, we did test pits because the grades have changed, we wanted to check the groundwater, and we did several test pits along the site, no groundwater, so it's not an issue. The other purpose of the, the survey was to do some coordination down at the, on Route twenty, but also, um, to survey the stone retaining wall. So we did that, and, I talked to the building inspector today as to what he wanted, and I prepared a letter and a drawing for him. The drawing that's referred, I'll, I'll give you this letter, just saying that the wall was repaired as, as, um, recommended by our, our other office, our geotechnical company. Asked the wall to be reduced to a certain height, and the slope behind the wall to be limited to a certain slope. A portion of the wall's gonna be relocated still, and that's on the drawings, and, um, we will provide a new design for that wall because that wall will actually be higher.
Do you have, have you heard from Kurt?
I know he was waiting for that information.
Yeah, I, right, I talked to him today, and I just didn't get the letter to him in time.
Okay.
I got a letter of that, of, of drop off.
Yeah, he's gonna get it, enter conservation. Okay, also, in doing that, we, um, better defined the widening of Griffin Road, okay, which is shown on there, and then the intersection with the, the site driveway. Probably the third sheet. So this is the enlarged site plan. Okay, so, what's the date on these plans?
Oh, this.
Those are the old drawings.
Is it B?
No. No, 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 the revision date.
Four thirty.
Oh, revision, you guys.
September, yeah, revised September tenth, here.
Okay, put up the wrong one.
You, you have another set over there?
I will be just.
That's why I brought it.
I will buy on.
I should've put them on, I need to. So.
Soon we'll have a T V, that's right.
Oh, yes, 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 that's it, okay, the overall site plan, and now the enlarged site plan. So we, we, we find this, you can see we opened, we, we actually surveyed to get the location of the utility pole, so, um, as you come in Griffin Road, there's a driveway. You know, there's a paved area here which is all gonna get removed, so, starting from that driveway, we opened it up and we set the curb twelve feet off the property line. So we're widening this, and we made a new entrance here, we'll have a curb come back to meet the existing edge of pavement now. Right, and in doing that, we have a, a fence that goes around the detention basin which is in the front, we, we cut that back to make sure we have adequate site distance. Right, and as a result of this, we have an application to the D O T. They're twenty-five percent through, they told us what the fees are, but I, I haven't gotten any other input from them.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I have a question about the, just in the, the Graves Engineering Report, it said that, you know, you had applied to the D O T, but did D O T have rejected this before?
No, apparently he, somewhere, you know what, when, when the application was changed to the self-storage, we did not anticipate going to the D O T. So we didn't wanna do anything that required a D O T permit. When we agreed to widen the road, well, now we're going to the D O T, so, what happened was the, the detention basin in front overflowed to a level spreader which overflowed over the ground and went into the inlet out in the street. Well, that's fine, but it's always better, if, now we're going to the D O T to connect right in to the drainage system, it's going there anyway, rather than having water spill over the curb and possibly create an ice situation on the road. I mean, so, so I, I saw the, the comment in Graves' letter that the D O T doesn't normally allow this, but we've got commercial projects all over, over other highways, but we have no choice, and we, we connected to the state's drainage system, so, look, if they say no, for whatever reason, we already had a design, we just.
I was just asking because he made a note of that in his.
Right, and I was gonna get to that, um, but if they say no, we already had a design with a level spreader that's already been reviewed, we just put it back on the drawing. Great with computers, you can just put it back on. So, we'll do that, but it just, it just makes so much more sense to do, uh, what we're trying to do.
Seems far more cost effective.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably a little cheaper to do it, but then again, just to have all that water from the basin, whatever overflows now, you know, and you know you're gonna have some erosion even though we have, um, gravel and, and stuff there.
So you mean intersection of one sixty-nine?
Oh, my God.
Yeah, yeah, right, I mean, right there at that intersection, so, also, um, talked to our client, and we, we, we came up with a design for the, the office building at the entrance. Right, nice, simple, but in character of the area, you know, um, so, and, and this is a square design. We, we've done a number of other self-storages, usually bigger, and, and sometimes they have highway view, they want a second story so they can put boxes and things so people can see them. Anyway, we, we changed the, the design so we could have the bathrooms in the office, um, and then in doing so, we kinda changed the configuration of the building. So now the building is parallel or perpendicular, um.
Oh, so you'll see it from twenty and oh, what's this?
Right, and so that's why we'll have a sign on the back, and that was one of the things on the elevation, that we'll have a building sign. You see right on the back.
Oh, very nice.
Okay, and it'll, it'll be tasteful.
Right.
It'll go part, part of the building.
It's gonna look really nice.
And of course Ralph's gonna make a nice sign, we just put building sign.
He'll think so.
He'll have something creative over there, I, you know, something nice with an arch, whatever, to fit in there, um, would be good. I thought that, that would, and would dress it up, because when you come up, um, uh, to the intersection, it's gonna be sitting way up there.
Which'll be nice, yes.
Landscaping or anything, that?
Yeah, we, we have landscaping, um, there's a landscape plan. I'm gonna say four sheets.
I'm getting a little, I gotta be reminded from, I don't know.
Well, we added, I don't think you were here when we talked about it, um.
Hey, you know what Todd would say to me, say that, oh.
I didn't, I didn't admit it on camera, but now you put it on camera.
Okay, so we, we have, this is the bottom of the basin, so there's landscaping along here, there's landscaping, uh, here as well, but then again, we're up. So we have some trees around here, and we put landscaping, um, along the neighbor's property here, and, oh, yes, yes, over here, this is, again, to block any light view to the, the homes that are over here. Okay?
Any pushback from any of the butters?
No, they were here at the last meeting, and they were, uh, they were nervous at first.
Yeah, okay.
So. One of the butters that had the property near the driveway had an issue about buffering, and they've addressed it to her satisfaction, so.
Right.
Right, and actually, we're going down, so this is lower, so, you know, it's not like any lights from here are gonna shine in, and we, we revised the, the lighting. There's no floodlights, they're all box downlights, uh, and lights along the building.
Okay, what else, what else do we have open on this phrase?
Okay, so we can go to the, the letter.
Yeah, they have a, a lot of drainage items that's really, um, they're, they're asking for information, um, based on, based on drainage, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, the, the other, uh, items have been pretty well addressed, uh, but when we get into drainage, which we get into their item number, well, sixteen, sixteen to twenty were already addressed, um, twenty-one, he was talking about, and we can comply with everything he's asked for, I think we have to discuss it. Some of these things, like item twenty-one, um, nothing's changed on, for that aspect of the, of the project that would require a new comment. You know, we've changed other things, but we haven't changed these, so he was asking just about how we're treating suspended solids in, in, in there.
Yeah, he just wants to report on it.
Yeah, uh, we'll, we'll go over that.
Catapult.
Okay, um, let's see, twenty-two's okay, twenty-three, oh, uh, he asks comment if you wanna inspect before and after construction Griffin Road, we're widening Griffin Road, so I imagine he'll handle that during the course of.
Yeah, the highway forming, we'll obviously have to review whatever you're proposing to do.
Right. Right.
Satisfying.
Okay, uh, so we get into twenty-four. Oh, oh, yeah, a, a comment about, um, he was worried about groundwater, you know, because the site's been lowered, but then the groundwater adjusts when the site's lowered. And as I said, we did test pits all over, we didn't encounter any groundwater, but they were worried about, he was worried about groundwater because of the cut for this road to come down, and we did put under drains, uh, on the side of the road, they're there, I thought, I said that, but I'll just make it clear to them that we put them in. Okay, let's see, twenty-eight, oh, this is a comment about the remaining wall in the back, because part of the wall that's being relocated, there's that stone wall that we just addressed that we lowered to seven feet, but the back part of it goes up to fifteen feet, we'll, I just have to provide a new detail for that.
And have you been to the conservation commission, or you have to go?
I already been, Kurt's just, I mean, Todd's just waiting on this, but I only have one plan for Kurt, so tomorrow I'm gonna make a copy of it at Staples, and I'm gonna bring Todd a copy, because the letter, uh.
The revised wall plan?
Not, the revised wall plan is on the original plan as far as the replication.
Well, the wall relocation and the replication plan are shown there, I just have to give you a construction detail of the wall.
Is that what Todd's waiting for?
No, Todd's waiting for this.
That the.
To say the wall that we lowered meets that you're happy and Kurt's happy.
Oh, got it.
Well, not, and I'm happy. And then you guys will be happy.
Todd already approved the wall staying, so Todd didn't care if it was thirty feet high or it was one foot, it can, the base of the wall can stay where it is because it just bumps in on, on the, on the wetland. We picked up the replication, so we're gonna make the replication to whatever square footage that the conservation board already approved. So Todd wanted this letter that I have here, but I wanna give Todd a copy of the plan too.
Right.
So I'm gonna, tomorrow morning, I'm gonna give Todd a copy of the plan and the letter, and Kurt as well, so both boards, Kurt and Conservation will be all set. But they already approved it.
Yeah, we, if, should the board approve, then it would be completely.
Addition that they're happy.
Exactly.
And, and the letter that I just gave you, the, the plan is part of the set, I just, okay?
So the second wall is fifteen feet high, you said?
Well, yes, in the back, right now, yeah, we have it at fifteen.
Does that go against the eight foot height?
No, no, that was for, because the way the, this is a stone wall, and it's a gravity wall, so we had to analyze the gravity wall and how much it could handle. So, um, if we want a fifteen foot high wall, we have to design a different wall than what was built. Okay, and the way we found out about, well, we, we actually dug test pits or had test pits dug behind the wall so we could see how deep was the base, how big are the stones, and that's. Um, item, well, twenty-nine, I thought I signed the letter, but, you know, just a signature. Item thirty, he asked for a table, it's a real academic thing, a table with the bottom of our infiltration bases and the bottom of groundwater, but I said we didn't hit groundwater, so it's kinda academic. We'll get that squared away. Item thirty-one, oh, and item thirty-one, he's asking us about infiltration trenches and routing our storm through them, but the infiltration trenches are designed as storage, and this is something I'll just clear up with him. They're not designed to route water through as a detention basin, they're designed just to accept water, and eventually it'll percolate into the ground. All right? Okay, item twenty-three is similar, we have infiltration, I mean, we, we know that the ground perks, that's it. Um, item thirty-three, our, our downspouts from the building go into these infiltration trenches, since the water's clean, you don't have to clean them again, clean the water. And if the infiltration trenches should fill up, we usually, we have an overflow at the downspout, and he just wants a detail. Okay, the next group of questions up to forty have been answered. We acknowledge this, um, oh. Oh, at forty-one's where he wants to know the offset between the groundwater and the bottom of the infiltration basins. We didn't hit groundwater, so we'll, we'll address that. Okay, and the rest, items forty-two, forty-three, forty-four have been acknowledged, no, nothing has to be changed. And item forty-five is where he asks about the connection to the D O T storm drainage system.
And you'll get back to us on the, the map site?
Yeah, when we get it, and if, for some reason, they'd rather have the water flow over the street, uh, we can just put the prior design back.
Can I have the, see more of those catch releases on the floor, anyways, because they're built for a six-year storm, a hundred-year storm. So, I mean, I got two down at Route twenty that's always dry, you know what I mean? So, I mean, I don't even ever see more than a foot of water when you get the trench to down for us.
So when you guys, when do you think you're gonna be done?
Here, we're done. No, no, we, we have to, I don't know when the D O T's gonna get back to us, they've had the application for several months.
Because.
Oh, we, we can respond to the letter and have that squared away, I, I think that, I don't know how you do it, but if that would be a condition of an approval, we'll, we'll just.
I think there's a lot open still for approval?
It's, it's, it's actually gonna be a lot of drainage information between the two engineers, the other outstanding information, the only real outstanding one is the mass D O T approval, but it'd be subject to that.
Right, so we can, so, so we could technically approve, yeah.
The drainage stuff is just some clarifications and we'd work it out, you're not gonna see a change in the plan.
With Mike sign off, with Mike sign off and mass, obviously the mass out of the condition and.
Right.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
I have to get something right.
And a sign off from, from Kurt and Todd, and fire is good?
Yeah, they addressed the issues with the fire department, they had an issue about hydrant and water line.
Yeah, we, we, at, at fire meeting, we, we have a new hydrant, we brought up here, there's a, there's a rolling gate to control access, we put a fire hydrant over here, and in one of the drawings, there's a truck path that shows.
And Jerry's good too, just.
Yeah, well, I mean, the improvements to Griffin Road that they're requiring are gonna have to be subject to Jerry's approval.
Right.
This is how it supervises, it'll have to be.
I'll work with Jerry, whatever Jerry wants, I'll.
Yeah.
So, what do we, what do we, and what?
I think we can.
Yeah, these are minor things.
This is gonna be a, as I put it in my approval letter, if, if the board approves it, is this a two-phase project?
Yes.
Yes.
And is this just, is this for both phases?
Yes.
We're approving both phases, but.
But you're gonna do it.
We're, we're gonna get one phase done, rent out the buildings and be working on phase two.
Basically, we wanna be able to issue a C O and then.
Right, when I get so many buildings up.
Site work on the first half so that you can open up or.
Correct.
Start making some. Start making some money.
And the, the remaining excavation, there's actually a note on the plans. There's, that's still that one hill. That'll, that has to be done during phase one, cause we don't wanna be taking that out on our newly paved roads.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second, on your favor?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion, we approve, um, this sort of land management for a storage, self-storage facility with, uh, items that get approved in this great report dated September twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, as well as the mass D O T approval for, uh, catch basin.
And all the other conditions that were discussed.
Yeah, I have a condition of the con, approval of the conservation commission, the building commissioner and, uh, address comments in the town engineer's letter and the improvements are subject to the highway supervisory approval.
I will second that. On your favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, Randy, do I just start back in here, uh, like, say a month down the road and make sure that where everything's getting checked off? That you guys are happy? How do you wanna handle that?
Well, I'm, Mr. Verden, obviously.
He's gonna.
I try to.
Yep, sorry.
Provide the information to Mike and then, if Mike Andrew, the planning board engineer, Mike will have to give me a report that he's addressed all his comments and then.
Okay.
That one thing is, is waiting for the D O T approval.
Yep.
But it's gonna be a holdup until their approval.
Yeah, really, we wanna get their input before we do anything else.
Yeah, but I mean, it's gonna be a condition of your approval, so it's a matter, you won't, we won't be able to give you permits to do anything until the D O T. I'll be sending you a letter.
Yep.
The, uh, approving the applications.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have a continued public hearing for Charlton Realty Company LLC. They've asked for continuation to.
Well, actually, it's continued to October sixteenth, but that was.
So see if they can come in on the twenty-third?
What's that?
See if they want to come in on the twenty-third?
They, they, one of the applicants that might be ready for the twenty-third. I just submitted the revised plan yesterday, so Mike Andrew obviously didn't have a chance to comment on it.
So I guess we need to come up with a date to continue, but if necess, if, if necessary, if that meeting gets like swiped, cause they're the only one or whatever. Then we can always just, can, kinda just bump it up for the canceled meeting.
They've been pretty flexible, cause they're not, I don't really think trying to beat the weather for winter or anything, so they're just trying to get it.
Have the plans substantially changed or?
Yes. The D O T made the routine, the planning board told them to do.
Was not happy.
That he didn't wanna do, but the D O T said no.
The gate can't go at the, at the road, it's gotta go in.
It's gotta go back, it has to be back far enough so a full tractor trailer can pull off the road.
So that also gets rid of his plan of having the, the vehicle storage, because that fence was right up against the road too.
Yeah, well, they only had to provide one gate where they had to set it back. And actually, now they're putting in like double gate. So this gate can go open this way and this one can open going that way for the trucks.
Okay.
And, uh, they also had to eliminate one of the driveways. D O T didn't want another driveway up there, so they had to eliminate the middle driveway.
So they did substantially change.
Yeah. That's, that's the biggest thing, you know, what they had to do.
D O T's careful with that twenty.
Yeah, good.
They should be, they should be.
That didn't make me comfortable.
No, I, they, and they made them do exactly what was suggested here at the meeting, so. Your people all actually do know what you're talking about.
So we got that.
We get lucky sometimes.
You get so many of me about me. Theory of large numbers.
Okay, so we'll continue it, we have a motion to continue it to the twenty-third and then we can always bump it up if necessary.
So move.
Second, on your favor?
Aye.
Um, we have a couple A and Rs.
We have one.
Gonna pull town to Charlton first, cause you're waiting for.
Yeah, actually.
Oh, sounds good.
This actually.
Oh, we don't have it?
Well, things have changed.
Well, yeah, so I, I was coming here just to give you sort of a, an update and a little clarification. I'm from the, the, the building committee. Um, we were originally, um, asked for an A and R, um, to purchase the land. God bless you guys, because I'll fight fires all day long. This whole, this whole legal mumble jumbo. So, um, we had a company that did an A and R for us. Um, they got given direction to do an A and R. They sort of didn't do it correctly, or they didn't do it the way that we, it needed to be done. A bunch of land attorneys got involved. Like the email chain is impressive, like. So, ended up being they scrapped the A and R plan and they went with an eighty-one X plan. That probably makes sense to you guys? That makes no sense to me.
You, you may, it's just a basically, um, re-certifying the property boundaries on it. And since the property is not changing.
Oh, no A and R necessary.
Right, no A and, A and R necessary.
Yeah, so they went with an eighty-one X plan and they tried doing the A and R, but it ended up being that the A and R was being done to satisfy his overlooks, um, piece of property, um, and not necessarily the town didn't need to do it. So, the deed, you know, the check's been cut, the land's been purchased, the, it's an eighty-one X plan now. It's twenty-three point something acres of land.
And you know where your, your boundaries are and that's why.
We do. And that was the issue, is that we knew where the boundaries were, but if they wanted to make an A and R plan, they needed to resurvey Masonic Holmes land that has nothing to do with this purchase.
Yeah.
And we were like, why do we need to re, why do we need to survey that piece of property? It has nothing to do with what we're purchasing, so that's why.
And they just have a little property, so.
Yeah, wrapped around the place.
It was actually, yeah, it was, it's what we call a wraparound piece. No, it's on the same side of the street.
I was just gonna say, it's on the other side of the street.
So you have our big piece of land, then you have the three point nine acres for the police department that they sit on. And then there's the blue house, Chuck Guy's house, which is one point zero nine acres of land. And then there's a little piece of land that wraps from the police station around Chuck Guy's house back to, um, Masonic home, between the blue house and the yellow house, which is like two point oh four acres of land or something like that. That's the land that was the jam up. That was the land that was kind of the problem, because they couldn't do an A and R plan, cause they didn't survey that land. Cause that land was attached to our land. So that's why they, all of the attorneys are happy. They went with an eighty-one X plan and.
And the way that you're happy, we're happy.
Randy, Randy helped me out tremendously. I sat with Randy. Cause again, I, I fight fires. I don't, I don't deal with any of this. I hire attorneys to do this stuff, so, um. But yeah, so I wanted to come, cause I knew we were on the agenda. We should be all set and we're good. Moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks, thanks. Appreciate it.
Let's see if I can get the right plan for the A and R.
Archangel Realty. Who's behind our, who's Archangel?
Gabriel Camasi.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, this is one that.
This is a piece of property.
Yeah, uh, this is the A and R plan and, uh.
Camasi's ponderosa.
Yeah, exactly, um.
Do I get to go and like?
We've looked at this already, so it's just another.
Yeah, well, one thing, because, you know, now I'm trying to make sure that everything's done right, so that in the future it doesn't become a problem. He hadn't put this one, its name on, well, it has its fifty foot, but it doesn't meet our bylaws. So you either have to go for a variance or put in not to consider a separate.
And if that was the one thing he had to redo, he's just to put in that non-able law.
Yeah, but I, it's just, once this gets filed and actually, somebody else has had an issue where they filed a plan, the town accepted it and it didn't have that language, so now they're trying to fight with it. It's another town, but they're trying to fight with them, like, hey, I can build something, except the plan that way.
I mean, often in the condition.
They've had something similar to that come through here too.
So, trying to make, trying to make these done right, so it does not happen.
Cause it said what, invading land or something?
Yes. So, yeah, you have to be careful with the languages to make sure that something doesn't fall through the cracks.
I know, we already listed this one too, so, um.
Yeah, I see.
Any questions or anything?
So they, all the, all the laws, you know, I checked it, they all meet the current bylaws, so with the exception they have from, from this large parcel here.
It's nice to have those big, you know, nothing parcels that, that will just stay like that forever and pretty much.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, it's got fifty foot open, so you could do reduced frontage, right?
Well, that's.
But it's, but it's not a buildable lot.
Unless you have a special permit.
Well, he.
It's on the plan, it's a buildable lot.
Unless you have a special permit for, for the town.
Can you do that?
Well, I mean, he could do something with that land. I mean, probably the simplest, I mean, thirty-seven acres, he could even go for a variance and have it built on a lot. If it doesn't make it.
Well, it's reduced frontage. You could do reduced, come, come, if you reduce frontage, special permit, right?
For fifty feet though, with only fifty feet.
That's why.
Yeah, that's what the bylaws says, fifty feet of front. Ten more acres.
What's, what's the difference, what's the difference of that flag portion? What's the?
Length?
Yeah.
The one thing, that five portions, actually wide enough where a road could be put in there. So if somebody want, you know, I don't think that's ever gonna happen, at least not in our right time, but.
It should, it, it.
Yeah, it's probably about three hundred feet.
It doesn't say on the side there.
Cause, because look at right there, probably about eight hundred feet.
Hmm. Okay, so it's.
But even if he chose a variance route, it's very likely that he'd get that variance approved.
Four hundred and twenty-five, four hundred and fifty-two feet.
Yeah.
Because it's really, it just happened to be a funky shaped lot, but it's a large lot of land.
Okay, we just. Yeah, you could do it.
I guess that's smart, not, uh, not a, not a severe option, so I guess I'm wrong, could be buildable one.
He wants to keep that.
Yeah, he wants, he wants it for, he wants it for his house, really.
He's trying to preserve it.
And this one down here too, says not to be considered a separate buildable lot.
That lot I, I do believe is, um, going to be sold to win a water.
Mm-hmm.
The road's frontage on that one.
Now, right, but then that becomes, let's see, this guy buys it, it becomes part of his.
Right. It's one of those lots right here.
He had pulled off, he came in.
Yeah.
Isn't he putting together two of these lots too for one fire?
He may be, that's, that I'm not aware of.
He'd have to come back for that.
It's the two lots that he's putting together is the one that's not a buildable lot, but that, that he's selling to the peanut butter.
Oh, okay.
These two have the same names.
Can I see that for, I just wanna see that for a second, because. Right, am I getting them? Are these are the two open ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to make, make a motion, we approve the A and R.
Second, on your favor?
Aye.
Aye. Or Qs?
Aye.
So, everybody can just sign away.
I can sign it, I just can't, I don't approve it.
I might know the party that's been pre-approved to buy the parcels. It just didn't, yeah. There's any conflict right now, but.
They tried to sell those. They pre-secured them. A hodgepodge. They really made a mess of that. I'm like, I don't know where. I think it was two thousand and eight, right, when everything kinda tanked. That's when they, they, they bought that white, that old farmhouse where Chris lives now, across the street.
Yeah.
And they, they chopped down a lot of that house and they sold it. And then they, I think they were Connecticut, they don't, they were Connecticut, they were, they were trying to sell. And they sold a few lots, but it didn't.
Yeah.
Do you know what they thought they were going?
No, I, I don't think it's, kinda picked the wrong type of inventory.
Market's pretty decent still.
Oh, it's, it's hotter than Hades right now. Thirty-year interest rates at an all-time low. Real estate inventory is finally, there's finally stuff out there. I mean, it's, it's crazy how hot it is.
Yeah, Houss, Charlton, Charlton's doing well, it's our house value.
Oh, extremely. Extremely.
Attack is so low.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you live in Charlton, you look at your assessed value, your, the amount you could probably sell it for on the open market is about a buck twenty more.
Really?
Yeah. Don't let the assessor.
Do they do a hundred percent or is it seventy? How, it's a valuation thing, so.
When, what do you mean, as far as financing goes?
No, I mean, what, how's a house assessed? Is it seventy percent value or is it four hundred percent?
They assessors have this funky system.
Yeah. Mine goes mine's next.
So two houses.
Oh, your bill breaks ridiculous in Connecticut.
Yeah.
Yeah, Charlton's at fourteen point seven five, my sister-in-law's at thirty-four point something. I mean, it's nuts.
So you have to sell mine.
No, I'm not gonna sell mine.
I mean, I wanna, I need, I need a place with, that has a barn.
Right.
That's what I.
I really, I need my, my chickens are going off.
I would agree.
Well, I need, I just need a barn of stuff. I don't wanna call me.
Can you bring it to Ralph's place when he's done?
Yes.
So when I'm buying, I, we go up.
Oh, good, everyone's.
No, I don't have to get any stuff yet. I need, I need to get a barn and fill it with stuff.
Yes, yes.
I'm, I'm jealous of that.
Yep.
I'm just across from.
Another barn.
The guys that are buying are buying three five, one sixty-three case and it's just two units of parcels.
Like, all right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, make it happen.
Cause I knew we did some of that before.
Plans I should give them or is less.
I would, I would do what's, I would do what's funny.
Is it all post-to-be, is it just reassembled?
I have a question, and I, I have one to get that.
Yeah, I said, you don't have a yard for that.
I have, I have a free one.
I have more.
Right, I don't have, I have.
Just some.
It's between, oh, it's more than a.
Yeah.
It's pretty sturdy though.
Yeah.
It's a hell of a driveway.
Probably sturdy.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess like, I, yeah.
Her frontage is.
I wanna be on Ram's horn.
City deep.
There's a, um, Amish company out of Connecticut that does awesome barns and garages and stuff and they're not expensive. They're not cheap, cheap, but they're not expensive.
Oh, okay.
My husband's like, you can't take care of the fish tank, you really wanna?
And I think it's an elder.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't remember her name, but yes.
Yeah, a client told me about them and they do.
You'll need one.
Really not.
That's what I was told, yeah.
I really.
Oh, yeah. She used to do it with me.
I think, it used to run years ago. And then when, when Lily was born, I had to, you know, sell it up. It's just too hard to deal with.
Maintain.
It's, it's ruin everything. Um.
Did.
Did you keep it on your property? I reverse it before.
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. Your story, yeah, okay.
All right, so A and R, we have the, um, the site, the release of covenant.
I forgot to have this done at the last meeting. The board approved the release of covenant, but I forgot to actually have it signed.
Oh, yeah.
That's my oversight, so the board can just sign that.
There's one.
Yeah, for the, right.
Who's that? I thought we had done that already.
No, you approved it, but I forgot to actually provide the release to sign.
I should be the first one to sign that.
I'll be very happy if it's done.
And then we have the, the zoning bylaw review.
Yes, um, attorney counsel currently has the bylaw, uh, the R F P and is reviewing it for review.
Okay.
So I am waiting. I've been back and forth, I'm, he's working on it, but he hasn't, hasn't had the time, I guess.
So as soon as it's done, like, we, I think we already voted to release that, just get it out there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And. All right, so we have, um, some things for, um, new business.
Yes. Well, the, the first one we addressed, so could they battery backup? Oh, you, um, we already did, oh, you handed bottom of that different one.
So we have the, um, we talked a while ago about getting the, we were talking about a smart board, that it's much cheaper to get a smart TV, which is so weird, but, um.
Oh, yeah, here we, um, we have a, the, purchasing something through the town is a project.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, they, the town wants you to use your personal credit card, like, say you go to Walmart, you wanna buy something.
Oh, it's awful.
You have to purchase it, but you don't get the tax, um.
Exempt.
Theft exemption.
If you're not tax exempt, but the town won't pay the taxes if you use your personal credit card.
Right. That's just stupid.
Right, yeah, and just to say that.
So you have absolutely no incentive to use your credit card.
Right.
Even the, and of course, your own personal credit card's tied up. They have no provision to buy it any other way.
As, as, as an auditor who always looks at that on a constant basis, having a credit card is much more, is much less risky than doing it any other way, because the credit card company ensures everything.
Exactly.[1695.04] Correct. And as long as you have correct controls around those credit cards, then there's no issues ever. A hundred percent.
Right.
I, I'm really surprised that the town has no method to do something like that, there, I mean, you got the road park, go to Home Depot, things like that, and you have no provision for that.
The only other thing.
You can talk to some of the places and ask them if they will please bill you, then that way you can use your tax exempt.
Yeah, but the cheapest places don't usually do that, don't they?
Though, exactly, they don't usually do.
Right.
You have to go to a more expensive place.
Yeah, if we, well, that's, that's the problem we ran into, cause honestly, we could save money if we could go to Walmart.
Right.
Purchase the TV, but.
Right.
They're giving these away now, okay.
Pay them, and we have no method of paying them.
They really are, it's crazy.
Maybe not the big, big ones.
Do you have a relative in New Hampshire or one of the students that has?
Yeah, right.
All right, we can go up to New Hampshire and buy for a, a, a.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, here.
The other thing is the, the town is very.
And that's for the.
All four things.
No, no, it's really not.
We can, what if we answer them to look around?
Jeff did.
The town is.
He wants, he wants your approval on that amount.
The town is actually very slow on refunding credit cards.
There's a way that you, it's why.
Can we put a touch on his own credit card?
Yeah.
It could be. Well, can we, as a board, as a board, can we actually send a, a little, um, let's send a little letter to the board of selectmen, asking them to relook at that?
Yes.
Set up our, set up a roadside table.
Relook at that, and actually, maybe they can speak to their own auditor about the risks of credit cards, like, send them an au- send them a email and say, or a letter, whatever, and say, can they relook at this purchasing policy? It doesn't make very much sense.
Well, even if they make, yeah, even if they make the individual buy it, cause that's not unusual, but the sales tax should be reimbursed.
Just say it in a nice way, though, don't forget. You can't you handle, can't you hand them a tax exemption thing like you'd have with Girl Scouts?
Right.
You should.
We do, we, he got that, Jeff did, I know, yeah.
Like we don't have that.
Yes.
So he got the certificate.
It should be public, it's public record, though.
He's got the number. Yeah.
But, but it kind of, it kind of looks fair for Jeff to actually put it on his credit card.
He made the tax exemption.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, maybe he's getting points and maybe it's a bonus form.
Right. A lot of people do that, um, cause I can tell you that if you, you should be able to pull the tax exemption.
Yes.
You're not getting six percent points, though.
No, but I mean, they will reimburse, how quick, how quickly is the reimbursement process?
Well, that's the problem too, he's like, he's, um, made purchase, he's been waiting two months, so now you get to start paying your bill, obviously, you know, so.
Your interest rate, yeah. No, no, see, that's unacceptable, it should be within a, a week or two.
Yeah, so, can, so can we, let's, let's, I think, just make it an, the initiative to send an email to the, to the selectmen, asking them to look over their purchasing policy?
Yes.
It just makes it hard on town employees and officials to get things done efficiently and effectively, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're actually, the board's actually probably gonna spend more money going this route, because we have no choice but to go this route, you know, and if somebody wants to be on the board for it.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we've been waiting a while, so, so we'll do that, so.
Yeah.
Alan's been fighting this for years and years and years, because he used to buy stuff and you'd be reimbursed and there's no tax, and I know this has been an ongoing issue forever.
Right.
So let's send another, let's send it a nice, a nice email and you guys write well, and say, can we look at, can we address that again, cause I know that they're, can they address it?
Okay.
Can they address it, yeah.
Because they're look, I know they're looking at policies and procedures and, and, and Dawn, as the finance person, will know, um, as an auditor, it is actually less risky to have cards along with it, the correct control are on those credit cards.
Right. Maybe it's just that. Right, correct.
Um, so we have a selected TV for, in, in, smart TVs.
This is actually, originally, we were looking at a seventy, this is actually a seventy-five, not much bigger, but it's good sized TV.
Seventy-five inch.
So it'll go up, it'll go up there and people will be able to come in and kinda plug in and it'll help with transparency, because, because the cameras will see, and we'll be able to flip pages around and
Yeah. Oh, it'll be wonderful. Yeah.
Maybe they can even have their pointer and do their thing, I think, um.
Yeah, yeah, many en- engineers will have their plans on a, a thumb drive, and they just, I have a laptop with.
Yes.
We can require that, we can, we can require.
We require.
And then you can populate up on the screen, not worried about easels, the audience can see it as well, you know.
It's in the bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, so it's perfect.
And even better than putting it on the table where the passengers have to look at it.
Oh, absolutely. Right.
A lot of towns are going to electronic and we have.
Yes. And the other thing we can think of is, it's getting closer to Christmas, we've waited this long, another month and a half, these prices are going to plummet, because the Christmas prices.
Right, you can go back the day after Thanksgiving to one o'clock, Walmart, you're there.
They always do.
Yes.
Take off for the team cam.
Cyber Monday, Cyber Monday, that's my day.
Cyber Monday.
We're buying TV.
I did that once.
Who's gonna go down with mine too?
I, I, I will come down.
It was for Lego stuff and one of them.
Alan's, my job is on amazon.com.
I wanted to take a little one.
Oh, really, these, these TVs are gonna be half price.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, so we're, we get a, we have to vote on this TV.
Well, that's like a seventy inch TV, seven hundred dollars.
Cause to give them a roll, do we have a motion to buy this seventy-five inch?
An oven.
TV and the, the other things that we've been told we need.
Oh, with all accessories.
So the subtotal, with the accessories, the t- the subtotal is one thousand two hundred and twenty-four and ninety-six cents.
So, second.
On paper, thank you.
Aye.
Look at that, we're moving up in the world, we're gonna, we're already the best board now, and maybe the best board with the best technology.
And the best candy.
And the best candy.
Yeah.
Always thinking of the chocolate now, the candy dish and the candy.
If, if on Facebook, if anybody has.
Wait till the chocolate fondue set comes in.
Right, we're, we wanted to do that, but it wasn't on our budget for this year, the chocolates fondue.
It, it will be in the budget for next year, we'll make sure we add it in.
Next year.
I believe I have a fondue center at home, I don't, I'll be happy to bring it in.
And if you see my, if you see all capital P A T S Y, like, how embarrassing! They have candy, just, just smile and you'll know that, I like it, I like the attention.
This dinner.
I used to ask Easter Bunny for, um, crudités, cause I don't care for candy for Christmas. It's an odd kid.
You read it through, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I read it through.
I have never seen.
Yeah.
We have to vote on it at town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out too, because, um, this social media bylaw is not only geared towards employees, geared to anybody that have any involvement in the town.
It's on the forum.
Absolutely.
Board commission.
Right, everyone.
Everyone, and, uh, I just, you know.
You'll all have to sign.
The president even doesn't even do this, you know.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I honestly just asked for everybody to read it thoroughly, it's pretty, uh, it's very restrictive.
I don't.
It did, it was, it was. Yes, it is.
It's a sign off.
So, cause what's the town's gonna be voting?
And, um, this is just.
Just to let you know.
Don't, don't post the town seal, who would ever do that? Well, I think the policies are good, I think, um, we'll read it.
Well, the ones.
You know, I, I understand having a policy, it makes sense, but this policy is very restrictive.
A policy makes sense.
I, I think the big deal is. I was just gonna say that, did you see this language?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, my gosh, I mean.
I have never seen so many.
So, I mean, a public official can't get fired, but an employee could get fired for, um, like, if you heckled somebody at a town meeting or something like that, it's kind of like the same.
Absolutely. Of two, including term, term, termination.
Well, basically, yes.
Is used in here frequently.
Yeah, it's giving them an out for all those people that are then ousted, cause you see it on the news all the time, because someone got drunk and they, um, bomb blasted someone on Facebook, and the next thing you know, they're no longer with that town. And that's what this is doing, but this is, I agree with you, this is a little bunch.
But, I. When it, when you read through it, though, I mean, you can have an opinion, it just might not be an opinion of the town or the majority of the town, and
Yeah. So.
that's, could be, for an employee, could be almost ground for dismissal, you know.
Yeah, but is it just like a town meeting where you, if you like get up and speak, you speak as a resident and not as a.
Right, no, this is saying that you are responsible for what you post, both as a employee and on your personal use, and they don't wanna be the thought police, but just be careful, and if you see all these restrictions on here, so basically, your own, anything you post is a person, you're also representing the town.
And then. So, so, so the employee has to be, so as long as I'm not an employee, I can do like funny Brett Kavanaugh jokes, but I just can't do.
Employees and officials operating personal social media sites, so that would be you.
That's what I'm saying, it's covering everyone who has involvement with the town.
That's, yeah, it's everybody. Yes, yes, it is.
That's everyone, that's why I wanted you guys to have that.
That's like the small state bylaw.
So.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't understand, so it's, it says, there's a, there's a stipulation here for town.
Look at number nine, number nine changes you a lot.
And I just, I just saw it, um, town social media content, what is, they don't define town social media content.
Yeah, number seven.
That's town social media site.
Yeah, but check out number nine, cause that's where we fall under.
But I think it even goes so far, like, if you were on Facebook or some other type of social media, Twitter, then you could all.
Yes, wow.
They, they have a hard time.
But that's not town social media, that's private social media.
Doesn't matter.
They have, they have a hard time getting.
Does, I, I.
Exactly.
This is if you read the definition, you know.
But this is insane, they have a hard time finding good employees and finding board members, so how, so, so this is a way to, I mean, this doesn't make a lot of.
Exactly. Okay, check out the minute.
Yeah, well, that, I honestly, um, it's gonna be.
I mean, this is. Who wrote this?
What happens when I, what happens when I make a personal post on Facebook?
Well, they, you're, you're gonna be responsible for whatever you say, whether, that's what I'm, my point is, like, you might have nothing wrong with it, but you might have a difference of opinion on something.
Don't, you're assigned, don't.
Yeah, exactly.
And to the point of a little bit of freedom of speech versus.
You're not allowed to, exactly, that's right.
That's right.
That's right.
Opinion, that's right.
But I want, then, then this has to extend, I want, we should, I'm gonna recommend a policy that we have a, an, an actual how you act in public, how do we like that, so at a town meeting, you cannot heckle anybody or do anything disrespectful or make nasty, uh, what, you, so this, how, how far does this actually go?
Well, that's, I, I think, it's gonna be voted on by the residents and you know, you know how it is, nine out of ten people are going to read this.
You vote on it.
They don't read anything, no, no.
So.
And one, it doesn't affect them, so they don't.
Exactly, right.
And two, they just don't bother to read it, so.
So number, so number one, let's, just made it as a board and it's.
Would you see this? All posts, number five, on page five of ten, all posts once made may not be deleted or amended except to correct typographical errors, because it's now part of the public records law.
What?
But not if you make it as a private person?
On all town social media sites, that, that means, so, that's town's of.
But that doesn't, Charlton Happenings, that's, I mean.
No, that's a private, that's, that's kind of neon, that's not private, no.
That's a private.
Okay, because, but that can get dangerous fast, because if you start getting in, not a debate, but just.
Charlton Planning Board site is a town site.
Exactly, okay, which means you can't respond to anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just like, or.
We don't respond to anybody, although, that, there's, there's no comments on that at all.
No.
We're all admins alike.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Well, if the town had its own Facebook page that posted things, we wouldn't need one, but we have, we need, I thought our agendas needed to be on Facebook.
I think that's a fair, that's what I did.
Um, so let's read this as a board and decide if we wanna, we wanna actually get up and, as a board say, we, we think that this is a little restrictive and we are gonna have a hard time finding people to, or individually, we can do that, but as a board, we could also get up and say something and.
Can I point out that number nine says we now have to be trained, since we're a moderator, regarding the terms of this bylaw, including the responsibilities, now there's training that we need to go to.
Are they gonna pay me? Because I'd like to get paid to get trained, get paid on to do that, do I get like a stipend, more than my two hundred?
Yeah.
And the residents aren't gonna read this, I think.
Yeah, the residents are gonna go.
Not the word.
And, uh, everybody understands with social media the way it is nowadays, if some, you know, there needs to be a little bit of guidance on them, that's.
Oh, my god.
It's smart.
So I can't, so if somebody tells me that, um, if somebody says something really, 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 really nasty about me, I can't respond on Facebook.
I have to say I was hacked. I was hacked three o'clock in the morning, somebody else was somebody.
Yeah.
Basically, that's.
Even though it was game.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure one of the residents, um, she's going to tie me up and put me in her basement and wear my skin, because she's obsessed with me, so, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Wow.
I tell people all the time, if you don't see me, I'm in her basement, and I'm, I'm gonna be tied up, and she's gonna be wearing my skin, because she's obsessed with me on Facebook, but, um, so I can't be following.
Not really, no. Maybe we'll go, probably won't.
There was one part, the word, sh- they made the distinction between this town social media moderator and the regular town moderator, you know, not to be confused.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we all need to go home and like actually read this in, in, through once and kind of, I'm surprised that a draft didn't come through across the, across the town in general, like all the boards, kind of.
Yeah. I think so.
Mm-mm. Oh, it's so much easier just to give it to people at town meeting, because then they're gonna pick it up, they're gonna, oh, yeah, I have one of these at work, cause everyone has social media, um, restrictions at work, they're gonna sign off on it.
They're not gonna pay attention.
That's what I'm saying, it's not, it's norm now, but this one is very.
Yeah.
Can I, can I get up and read this on the, at the microphone?
Ten pages, ten pages, it said a little.
I think I'm gonna get up and read it at microphone, well, does anybody else, they can even all take a number, and just go through and read this whole entire thing?
I think you should read highlighted portions, though.
They did, what?
I think, yeah.
With the First Amendment protected speech.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, I, you know, most of it applies to, I don't see a lot of this that applies to personal social media, this is all town sponsored social media.
My.
Oh, no, right at the beginning, all employees and officials are responsible for what they post online.
Exactly. Yep, whether personal or on the town site.
I, the good, I need, if you're, make some sort of comment that is based on a town activity or town personnel or something going on in the town that you don't agree with.
But we have. We have personal opinions, but we don't take those personal opinions to the table.
Right.
You don't wanna, then you, then you get into the risk of somebody interpreting it and interpreting it, and then it's like, well, we're gonna bring you to court because we interpreted that as a.
Then it's very.
That's right.
It, it just opens up a can of tarantulas.
So we just, we make sure that things aren't just being passed, just to have something in place.
And. Yeah, just so you're aware, you're not allowed to respond negatively to any comment made, according to number seven.
Thank you.
Is it time to adjourn yet?
Thank you for that comment. Thank you for calling me that. I've always liked that word.
The moderator, though, says, as an authorized town of Charlton official, appointed or elected, or employees who review, authorize, and allow.
This is basically the moderator of the site, so the Charlton Planning Board site, we're all moderators.
Could they, could they copy and paste this out of something and not actually read it?
Oh, okay.
Somehow I don't.
No, I think some time was spent with that.
Yeah.
Very much time was spent with this, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, the, our prior administrator, I know, spent some time with that, and I believe it was, I don't know if it was, I think it was C H R also.
A bit.
Great.
That's great.
I forget that, because there's some town administrator.
Yes, exactly.
Home site.
Yeah, I might sniff that right out of him.
Can we ask, can we ask if the personnel board has any, had any input in it? We're curious.
Well, you can, if it's gonna go to town meeting, we'll ask for town meeting.
Who asks it, how she should overdo it. Honestly, we have a very hard time getting people who wanna even be on our boards and to throw this out there and say, all right, come run, you can't, you, you pretty much now can't do anything.
Basically goes down, right.
And what happens as a public, what happens if, as a public official, someone calls me something really nasty and I, I went, and I, and I go, and I say something really nasty back, because.
All you can say is I respectfully disagree with you.
Just. Exactly.
Yeah.
In a very nice polite way, I respect, I respectfully disagree with that comment.
That's the purpose, it's come out in the heat of the morning.
Yeah.
Automatic, you don't, you don't see a thing about it.
Yeah, right.
You can just write, sorry, we can't be friends.
I know you are, but what?
I love, I love you, too.
Yeah.
Bless you.
There you go.
But I just thought that the board should see that, because it affects all of you as well as many other people, so.
Yes.
Yes.
That's, thank you.
We have a special town meeting change.
Last but not least.
So we have, so we know tomorrow we have our executive session, um, we have, um, all the attorneys are gonna be at their round, it's giving you a basic update. The executive and McKay will be in here tomorrow to update the board, and then they'll all go together to executive.
Because I'm sure you saw the paper today.
Oh, okay. No, I didn't.
Oh, they, in the paper today, yes, the subdivision plan has been voted in, um, and it has been accepted, and it said that it's, um, the planning board is planning on taking, asking for more funds to fight it and to appeal it.
Yes, I saw.
Um, and there was a firestorm.
The subdivision or the site plan?
This, the.
Site plan.
Was it the site, I thought it was subdivision.
The subdivision.
No, it's, it's the, um, I don't know what exactly we discussed, with the approval, the judge's, or the devil plucker, who informed me yesterday that the judge handed down his decision.
I'm sorry. Yes.
There is no.
Yes.
What's, what's existed is that, is that Mark said, Mark's, Mark's.
This one, yes.
Yeah.
It's the decision we expected, they remanded it back to the board and the board.
Yeah.
Right, but we were, um.
So, we go, this, so we gotta cancel about, about the details.
Yeah. What we say there. Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm just quoting what was in the telegram and gazette today.
In the newspaper.
So.
I don't need to know anything else.
I, I didn't get this copy.
Mark was busy and he had, he hasn't had a chance to put everything in writing. I, 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 I know what's going on and I will forward it as soon as he gets it, so everybody can.
Or you can read the obituaries in the local section of today's paper, and it's also right there.
Yeah, there's, there's an article in today's.
Which is all I'm allowed to know about.
Yeah, okay, so that's. Um, so you saw that there was a, um, a post on Facebook and it got deleted that said that I went to the select board and asked for five hundred dollars for a secret five hundred dollars to give to the PCC group.
What?
It was like a weird post, and I was like, huh, and then there was other comments, and I wanted to say, no, I went for, for, we wanted a solar review, like we wanted five hundred dollars to sol- for, for, um, Mark to do the, to write up an opinion on the solar review, on the, on the, um, the freeze of the land.
Oh, okay.
Um, and so it was, it was in there, and then it was clearly just like a made up thing, everybody was like all commenting, and then the person probably was told that they were wrong and then they deleted it. But it, it's, it's kind of, so it's funny how social media is, it's a, it's a disaster, and the same, the same twelve people comment.
And it breaks, yes.
Fake news.
Yes.
Fake news.
Right.
And so, I, I'm kind of at the point, every once in a while, I need to go in there and say, whoa, step, step.
Nope, you need to say nothing.
Every once in a while, I need to say, whoa, step back, because I, because I, I, the issue with my husband's like, do you see what they're saying? Like there's, like, do you see what they're saying? You need to go and defend yourself.
Yes.
When I lock on the door at like two o'clock, he does, he gets pretty upset, because, you know, he loves me so much and really doesn't like people to say and say stuff about me. But, um, the stuff, so, there's the same twelve people that comment over and over and over and over and over, and, um, I think that not reading it is very, very helpful.
Yes. Yes. Eternal stress room.
And, and we're, we're open, we have open forum, and if anybody has a problem with our board, they can come into our board and we, we can talk face to face. Um, I s- I say it all the time, it's very, it's a, it's really, um, Facebook warriors.
Cowboy, cowboy cowboys.
They're, they're.
Yep, here you go.
It's, but come and speak to my face and I'll answer any questions, and, um, our board will answer any questions, but it's how it goes. Um, so is there anything else that we want to talk about?
What is this miracle panel discuss going to suck and throw money?
Yeah. Well, that's, um, we got a bill from Merrick, Merrick O'Connell.
Yeah.
For the end of August.
And I looked at it, I reviewed it, and everything looked fine to me with.
No, the problem is, we have now pleaded all the money the Board of Selectment allocated to us, and this is only till the end of August, and he's been working during the month of September, and now we're into October.
Absolutely.
Ouch.
So we're already short, um, on the, on what we did.
We haven't figured out. We're okay.
Yeah, well, we have, we have a number short, we, you know, up to the end of this, but there is.
We had five thousand. So we need six more thousand.
Because the, the town allocated seventeen seventeen for a total of thirty-four thousand dollars, we're now thirty-five and change with Merrick O'Connell.
Okay.
And we have, so, Planning Board's gonna have to go back to the Board of Selectment and ask for additional funds for legal costs.
And the idea of full disclosure, what were they defending? What, I just.
Subdivision, subdivision.
They are defending the subdivision.
Subdivision, so.
Perfect. This is nothing to do with appealing V G G.
And then. No, this is purely the subdivision.
Oh, no appeal.
This is, this is just to defend our original subdivision.
No appeal.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I, I just want that on record, because that's where a lot of the miscommunication is coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, it's, it's, appeal is a totally separate item, this is just the subdivision.
We have not, we have not. We have not asked for any money to defend any appeal, we just want our original decision to be defended.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Um. Okay, um, so we got a, remember on the original, we, we got an open meeting law violation on February eighth
That one. Yes.
from, um, President.
Was it?
Um. Caruso?
No.
Was it, Nicole Caruso?
Oh, yeah.
And so she had made that, the statement, remember on the, the, the meeting, um, I think Attorney Pill showed up and it was that complaint. And we sent a response and the, the A G agreed that we were right. I guess she appealed that again, so, um, you know, she's, I mean, what, what, what the, what the, what she said was that we purposely added open forum.
Right, that's all stones back to it.
Um, to, just to let Attorney Pill come in on purpose and coordinated all that. Well, in fact, we all attended, at least the majority of us attended the open, we, we, we went to a couple hour training with the attorneys, and the attorney said you should have open forum on your agenda, so we had added that because K P Law said you should add it.
Hmm. I'm reversing that.
And then it all kind of like, we, the first time, it kind of was a little bit crazy, but, and I know I'm bad at stopping people when they're talking, but we were in the middle of waiting for an attorney, and attorney happened to show up that happened to be watching it from afar, beyond our, be, out of our control. And her claim is that we, so, um, long story short, the, the A G has to do her, um, her, her, her review of the appeal.
Redoing it.
So she wants to talk, call on the phone and verify the facts that, um, that we've already stated.
What happened?
So I, um, since I need a root canal on Friday and I need to be out of work anyways, um, I will, um, try to talk. I have a, I have a call, a call scheduled on Friday and, and I don't know, somehow maybe Jean will coordinate, so one of us, we have two people on that call, just to answer questions about that meeting.
Perfect. Yep.
With mouth full of gals.
I was just gonna say.
We'll see how that works, so I don't know, I don't, I've never had a root canal, I'm sure it's.
You're not gonna be talking.
Fun.
No.
Um, but, well.
Mike's speed of the conversation.
Maybe.
Now, for people to do these.
Paykillers might make an interesting tip.
So, so you can do, you can do O, O M Ls all the time on anybody, anytime, whenever, whenever you feel, yeah.
Really? And so, free. For your charge.
So the, the A G decides that, the A G decides that, whether to.
Yep.
I, I mean, this seems, I wasn't here for that, but I mean, this seems like a non-issue, because open forum is standard that, that the public can bring up anything that is not on the agenda, that's what the open forum is for.
Yeah.
So it's just, and that's why.
Exactly.
You can make a decision on it, but you can hear it.
You can't hear it.
Yeah, and anybody wants, but you know, personally concerned about something that's not scheduled on the agenda.
You can't take any action.
So, so you saw our response, right, you already, you saw the response, how, and it seemed to be taken care of, the A G was happy, but it, but it was, it was just appealed, so it's just a, a matter of, of their investigation,
Yeah. Formalities, so they have to do it, yeah.
so they can finally close it, there shouldn't be any issues, and, um, I mean, by any chance, if we do get some sort of a, like, an, a finding of a violation, um, we'll let, we'll let you know.
We'll let you know.
Oh, what was the date? I mean, you can always say.
February.
The date, we went to the.
Oh, yeah, it was the day before, February fifth, our meeting was February sixth.
Oh, yeah, we have.
Well, that was, that was.
Yeah.
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 Oh, it's real trash.
You edit it to the agenda.
We edit it per.
And the, and the, the select board did, does it too, so we always looked at the select board, they had that going on, so we thought we'd just kind of copy.
And we talked about.
Yes.
But, you know, that was a very touchy time, and I think a lot of people were just angry for other reasons, and this was a little bit of retaliation, it is what it is.
Yep.
Yes. Yes. Oh, no doubt.
Who's the person? Is it a resident that?
Yes, two residents filed a complaint.
There is.
And then one of them, and they, they both, they both got this, they were the exact same complaint, and we just, we responded, and one person appealed, and one person didn't appeal, so, um,
With the exact same letter.
Yeah.
I think it's part of doing business.
Yes.
Yep. Just trying to keep you.
Because people don't hear what they like, they tend to try to go anywhere possible, which is, I mean, it's what it is.
Human nature, yep, I, I didn't like your intro, I'm gonna go over here.
We do try, I mean, I think it's funny that we would get an O M L violation, because honestly, our board is probably like overly transparent.
Exactly. You have to mention we're on TV. I mean, a lot of the, and I don't know if I'm trying to be silly, but other than the selectmen, a lot of the boards aren't, so anybody can, anybody can watch, um, or play, you know, Pac-Man. Anybody can.
It's home, not public.
So, so John can go home and play Pac-Man with you.
All right, so, um, wow, look how early Roddy is. Motion to adjourn.
Wow, wow, he's making up for the last one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.